Everybody, it's now 6:30 PM. We have a special study session this evening. We have a few folks from our Canton Cultural Arts and Heritage Committee who are here to make a presentation on behalf of the committee as well as, well, it's basically, the topic is a new artist laureate program that is being proposed. And Susan, if you could maybe introduce who's with you this evening and take us through.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to present the Canton Artist Laureate Program to you. And we're going to do a two-parter here. I'm going to start with a little introduction, tell you a bit about the Canton Culture Commission, and share a little bit about the economic power of the arts. And then I'm going to introduce John Mullenex, who is a member of our Canton Culture Commission, and he's going to walk us through the Canton Artist Laureate Program. And I'd also like to acknowledge Darian Moore and Bill Tesson, two members of our Canton Culture Commission. When Canton Township leaders first established the Canton Commission for Culture Arts and Heritage back in 2003, the goal was to advocate for the arts and the development of arts programs in Canton. But at that time, they also had the wisdom and the foresight to recognize the economic impact of the arts and culture and its growing importance to Canton in creating vibrant communities and fueling its economic development. In fact, arts and culture is actually gaining widespread recognition as a powerful force, both in the national and the state economy. The art sector contributes more than $760 billion, that's billion with a B, to our U.S. economy. That's more than transportation and the agricultural sectors combined. And it's becoming increasingly important, in fact, LinkedIn just released a study that creativity is now the number-one soft skill that employers are looking for to help manage change in this rapidly changing environment. And let's kind of take a look at Michigan now and what you have in front of you on the screen. According to the U.S. Bureau of Economic Analysis and the National Endowment for the Arts, the arts contributed $13.6 billion to the state economy, and more than 128,000 people are employed in creative industries in our state. Creative Many also did a study recently, and I'm going to throw this out because I thought it was interesting. Creative Many is a nonprofit organization that advocates for arts and cultural development in our state, and they culled the data from 410 arts and cultural destinations in our state. And get this, Michigan's 410 arts and cultural destinations generated $1.3 billion in direct tourism in our state. Now, this data was from 2015, so I guarantee you that's even more. And more than 17 million people attended arts and cultural activities in 2015. That's enough to sell out Comerica Park 415 times. And I took a look at what's happening local, so let's shop local for a moment, shall we? At the Village Theater in 2018, we entertained 29,400 unique visitors. That's people who purchased tickets to attend a performance at the Village Theater. We also had 28,548 participants. Now, that's not unique participants. For example, if you went to the Village Theater three times, you were counted as one. But still, that's in addition to the ticket sales, and they have 125 volunteer ushers at the Village Theater. So that's the Village Theater alone. And for those of you who may not be familiar with our Canton Culture Commission, we put on some of the activities in partnership with Leisure Services and the Village Theater each year, such as the annual Dr. Martin Luther King Commemoration led by Darian Moore, the Acts of Culture, the Acts of Fashion Show, which is part of the Village Theater, also led by Darian and his family. Bill gets involved in the Chinese Festival that we have at the International, at the Village Theater, the International Festival, and May 10th through 19th, we're going to be celebrating Acts of Culture Week here in Canton. So these are some of the things that our Arts and Culture Commissioners get involved in at the early planning stages. Now, we serve as an advisory committee to the Board of Trustees, and we updated our strategic plan back in 2017, which gives us a roadmap for fulfilling our advocacy and advisory role. In fact, Pat, I remember you participated in our brainwriting sessions and the planning sessions when we were working on the strategic plan, and Bill presented the strategic plan to the Board of Trustees a while ago. Our mission is to enrich Canton Township by celebrating our diversity, promoting our creative spirit, and honoring our history. Now, you'll notice I said "our" instead of "its," and that's because it's really going to take all of us to realize this mission, because the arts, culture, and heritage belongs to each and every one of us in this community. We've set a rather aggressive aspirational vision for cultural arts in Michigan. We want Canton Township to be known for its arts and culture, just as the automotive industry is, just as Michigan is identified with as, for the automotive industry. Our goal is that the arts will become integral to Canton's brand identity. One of the main goals we've identified in our strategic plan is to position Canton Township and Cherry Hill Village as a regional hub for cultural collaboration. So how are we going to build this hub? In order to build the hub, it's going to require some spokes, right? So to accomplish this and build this hub, we wish to attract and support artists in our community, cultivate a community appreciation for the arts, and promote our township's artistic contributions throughout the region. And our commissions found a way to contribute toward all of these goals, all of these requirements simultaneously, and that's through the Canton Artist Laureate Program. And now I'm going to introduce my partner and Culture Commissioner, John Mullenex, who's going to walk you through the Canton Artist Laureate Program. And by the way, this program is John's brainchild, and he deserves the credit to bringing it to us this evening. John?
Thanks, Susan. That's very generous, but the reality is, we've been working on this program for 10 months or so now, through the leadership that Susan has shown on her Strategic Planning Committee. And I really want to take a moment to thank Susan for that, and also Greg for all the support and guidance that he's provided to the Cultural Commission as we've gone through the process of putting this program together. So the Artist Laureate Program, it's designed to help achieve that strategic vision that Susan discussed, right? It's not going to do it by itself, but it's a powerful tool, we believe, in our toolkit that can help us get closer to realizing the aspirational goal of making Canton be known for the arts in the same way that Michigan is known for the automotive industry. It's a, it's a big goal, but this is a way we can start making steps towards it. And specifically, the Artist Laureate Program will enrich Canton Township by sharing, fostering, and promoting the arts, will provide a monetary award to support the continuing development of artistic talent inside of the community, will attract and nurture vibrant artistic talent within the community, to the community. And through those mechanisms, we will have something to promote to the surrounding region and really establish Canton as a regional arts hub in that way, right? Additionally, this program will create an archive collection of public art that reflects the evolution of life in Canton as it's created. So I'll talk a little bit more about that as well as we go through the details of the program. So before we get into too much about what the program is, I just want to say that this is a program designed to really bring Canton to prominence in the arts, and we think it's important that the people who fill the role of Artist Laureate live in Canton, or at least have a studio in Canton, or, and ideally both. There'll be a bunch of other requirements and criteria, you know, we're going to evaluate the quality of their artwork and references, and we're going to ask them to submit a plan for public service and a bunch of other things. But, you know, I really want to drive home that this is a program for Canton, and we want to really showcase the talent we have in the township. That's the idea. So the Artist Laureate Program. Laureate is not a word that we use in kind of common conversation very often, and so I, you know, I've found that sometimes there's questions of like, what does that actually mean? Where does it come from? The idea of a laureate comes from the ancient Roman tradition of putting laurels on people who were victorious in battle or had achieved some kind of distinction. And in modern usage, we also use it to mean somebody who has earned distinction or is eminent in their field in some way. So for example, the Nobel Prize winners are called noble laureates. The United States has a, through the Library of Congress, has a poet laureate, most famously Robert Frost, I think, is probably our most famous poet laureate, but every year there's one. And that's a person who is considered one of our most eminent poets. And the Library of Congress and the poet laureate program was a real model for us as we devised the Canton Artist Laureate Program, because not only do they recognize somebody who's eminent in their field, but they also require that person to be an advocate, in this case for the literary arts, in our case, for the visual arts. And so we want somebody who's going to both be deserving of distinction, eminent artist in Canton, but also somebody who can be kind of an ambassador for the arts, for the people in Canton, and for the community that surrounds Canton. So what do they actually get? If you're selected as the Artist Laureate for Canton Township, it's a one-year term, and you get a $10,000 cash award. It's issued in quarterly payments. You also get no-cost studio space, and you get two exhibitions and receptions. Total value of all of these things together adds up to just under $14,000. Now, what do you, what are your obligations? The obligations are two types. There's an art creation obligation and a community service, community engagement obligation. I'll talk about each of those kind of separately. In terms of art creation, there's two fine art shows that you're obliged to put on as the Artist Laureate, one at the beginning of your term. And this is a show that draws from your body of work over the course of your artistic career. It shows why you were selected. That's the idea. And it's an introduction to the people in the community who may not know you yet and say, you're, you are the, you know, where you establish yourself as the Artist Laureate and kind of make a connection to the community. At the end of the year, end of your term, you have a show that is primarily focused on the new works that you've created during your term as Artist Laureate. Additionally, at the end of the year, after you, when you do your last show, you donate one original piece of artwork to Canton Township to become part of Canton Township's permanent art collection. And this is what I was referring to earlier. So today, that doesn't exist. This would be a new archive collection, and every year, a new piece of art that speaks to or reflects in a meaningful way the people of Canton will become part of Canton's collection of art. And the idea is that it would be displayed prominently in publicly accessible locations. So perhaps, you know, this building, the Human Services Building, could be the library and other public buildings that are around the community. Community engagement obligations. So there are three public, actually, this says three, but there's actually seven public events that the Artist Laureate is required to undertake, to engage the community during their term. Two of them are the exhibitions. One of them is a community outreach program that they create, and depending on who they are and what their expertise is, and what their, you know, what they decide they want to do, they will propose it in their application and it'll be part of the selection criteria. But once, once they're selected, they'll execute that program, right? And it could be hosting workshops, or it could be a variety of different things. There's also four open studios, and those aren't listed here, but in addition to those three, there's four open studios that they would do throughout the course of the term. In addition to their educate, their, their public outreach events, they will also undertake a significant cultural project of their own design. Again, we left this a little bit vague intentionally because we want the artists that are selected to be free to design this program themselves and bring their own creativity to it, but the idea is to leave something lasting or do something impactful for the community that elevates the cultural, you know, the cultural environment of Canton Township. You know, for example, again, this, this could be like a series of workshops, this could be producing a book of portraits, you know, of people of different heritage in the community, it could be, you know, creating a mural, it could be organizing and facilitating a public art installation, variety of different things. The Artist Laureate will also participate as an advisory member of the Canton Commission and the Artist Laureate Subcommittee that, that manages the Artist Laureate Program, and they'll serve as Canton's ambassador for the arts, both online, you know, on Facebook and Instagram and social media, and in person. So going out to events and where artists gather or the public gathers in surrounding communities, you know, participating in things in Livonia and Dearborn and Ann Arbor and Detroit, and making sure that, you know, the broader community understands the role, the commitment that Canton Township has to the arts and the kind of great work that's being done in Canton Township. So the studio, let's talk for a minute about accountability and contingency planning. This is a new program, and, you know, because it's new, we've made our best effort to figure out how it should run, but we don't know exactly what's going to happen and what contingencies we're going to have to deal with, so we wanted to think in advance about what we might need to address. And in particular, one question in our discussions that came up over and over again is, what happens if we give a big prize? $10,000 is a big prize. It's enough to get people's attention, right? That's the idea. But if we give a big prize to an artist and they get run over by a bus, what do we have? Right? So we wanted to avoid that kind of situation. We decided that what we would do is we would issue the payments in quarterly, you know, the award in quarterly payments, they get $2,500 per quarter. That would come after they deliver a quarterly report at the Canton Culture, Cultural Commission's meetings, and then a month prior to that, they would have the open studio tours that I mentioned earlier. So commissioners and other members of the public would be able to come in, sit down in an informal environment, learn about what the artists were doing, what their programs were, what their plans were, see their work, and, you know, really get a sense for how things were progressing. And after those steps, then the commission could release the quarterly payment to the artist. If for any reason, the commission thinks that the artist is unable to fulfill their program obligations, we can name a runner-up, right? If there's, there's, I think the way we've worded it actually is, if there's less than six months remaining in their term, then we'll name the runner-up as the, as the New Artist Laureate. If it's less than six months remaining in the term, then we'll just kind of wash, call that year a wash and move on to the next year, but, but we have a plan there to name a runner-up if, if need be. So governance and fund management. For governance structure, we've decided to create an Artist Laureate Subcommittee of the Canton Commission for Culture Arts and Heritage. It'd have between five and seven members. Two members would be appointed initially in the first year, two members would be appointed by the commission, Cultural Commission. One member would be a Canton Leisure Services employee appointed by the Township Supervisor, and then up to four additional members would be drawn from civic groups, the arts community, and other organizations and individuals. After the first year, the idea is that the previous Artist Laureate would serve on the commission, on the Subcommittee, and the commissioners on the Subcommittee would drop down to one, so it'd just be a single commissioner. And part of the reason for doing this is to make sure that this is a broad-based program, a program with broad-based community support. It's the Canton Artist Laureate Program, but we don't want it to be a program that is just the Canton Township program. We want it to be a program that really has support from other civic groups in the community. We think that's really important to the sustainability of the program and the acceptance of the program amongst the population. In terms of fund management, we're soliciting funds from various civic groups, local businesses, and individuals, and we're also applying for a McCaca Grant, and all of those funds will be placed into a, what's called a designated fund with the Canton Community Foundation. And so, you know, when somebody wants to go to the Canton Community Foundation and donate some money to us, they simply look for the fund that says Canton Artist Laureate In terms of our timeline, this is actually a really busy time. April and May is going to probably be our busiest time this year. The reason is, is that we have a grant application to get in before June 1st, and as part of that, we need to demonstrate that we have community support. So we've been working on this program for many months now, but we're, like, with this meeting, we're at the point where we're ready to start having conversations as often as possible with as many civic organizations as possible, right? So we'll be going out to a variety of different civic groups, and hopefully we'll be able to receive some financial support from them, but just as important, we want to also receive letters of support that we can use to augment our grant application. That'll continue, that process will continue throughout the summer months, and on September 15th or so, we'll find out if we win the McCaca Grant or not. The end of September, we'll make a go/no-go decision on whether we'll really run this program in 2020, right? So if we, assuming we go ahead, we will begin soliciting applications for the 2020 Artist Laureate Program in October. In, end of November and December, we'll narrow it down to three finalists, and then in January, the final selection will be announced, and their term will begin on March 1st. Right? And that's kind of how the timeline will work. So sum it up, the arts are more important than ever to our community. Give you an example, one little, my favorite little economic fact is, the last two years that we have available for data, the arts portion of the economy grew at 4.9%, significantly faster than the economy as a whole. So it's just continuing to become a more important part of our economy. And of course, it's always been an important part of quality of life. Our strategic plan has recognized that, and we believe that the Artist Laureate Program, by attracting artists, by growing artists organically, by retaining the artists that come to Canton and grow in Canton, will, they'll give us something to promote. And as we promote those artists, it'll have this virtuous cycle that will draw more artists to us, help us grow artists, and help us retain artists, and this cycle will spin around. It all needs to be supported by accountability, strong governance, strong process, a broad set of stakeholders, partners, and donors. And if we do that well, then we believe it'll lead to improved quality of life and improved economic development. How we measure that, we're kind of still working on it, to be honest, but we believe that that's the goal. So how can the Board of Trustees help? I kind of divided this up into a couple of different sections. During the program ramp-up between now and September, we'd love to, and beyond, to be honest, we'd love your input, feedback, and, and support for the Artist Laureate Program. In particular, we'd love to get a letter or a statement endorsing this initiative that we can share as part of our McCaca Grant, to give us a better chance of, of winning the grant. And any letters of introduction that you can provide or suggestions you can provide in terms of potential stakeholders that, or supporters that we should meet with, we greatly appreciate hearing about that as well. During program execution, we'd love to have a township proclamation announcing the new Artist Laureate, once they've been selected. Your support promoting the Artist Laureate and the public service that they're doing in the community, I think, will go a long way to helping people in the community and people outside the community recognize the good work that's happening. And then certainly, your support for placing the work that's donated by the artists into the township public buildings would be very much appreciated. Throughout, I want to, you know, I mentioned Greg has been fantastic. He really has been a great guide for us as we've put this program together, and I hope that you'll continue to support the Canton Leisure Services Office's official involvement with the program. So, any, any questions?
Got about seven minutes left, so we're going to kind of move left to right if we could. Summer, as our representative on the Canton Commission for Culture Arts and Heritage, why don't you open up and share with us?
I think it's a great program. I'm excited to see this brought to fruition. I do have one quick question, though, and just wondering the thought behind having the age of the laureate start at age 21?
You know, it's a great question. I'm not sure that there's a real reason to choose 21 as opposed to 18 or 25. The, we felt that anything younger than 21 would be extremely unlikely to merit the, the award, because it takes time to achieve eminence in the field, but very specifically, we don't have an age, we don't have any, you know, we wanted, we wanted to make an age requirement that would not ever be an issue, if you know what I'm saying.
Well, we also want to give the artist some time to develop a body of work, because part of it frankly is the quality improvement process, the accountability factor. If we raise $10,000 from our local businesses, private individuals, et cetera, we owe it to them to make sure that the art is of a caliber that's worthy of their contributions. And so as part of that application screening process, we're going to ask them to submit examples of their body of work to show a history of progression and to demonstrate that they are indeed a serious artist.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I thought it was very well thought out, and I agree with you, having raised an artist in my own family, it's, takes a while for them to get their feet under them, and also, most likely, many of them at that age will be off somewhere else doing their art, studying somewhere, but it's a good thing to think about. You mentioned at the beginning about us becoming a hub. Is this just one initiative that you're looking in order to help create us as a hub? And secondly, have you looked at other communities that are considered hubs already, maybe Sagatuck or Grand Rapids or places in other states, and what they've done?
So a couple of great questions, and I'll share a couple of thoughts. So we've discussed, I would say informally, several other ideas. You know, the, the strategy really is to look at the infrastructure that supports artists in the community and see what's missing and try and plug those gaps, right? So that, conceptually, that's, that's what we're doing. So think about retail space, think about studio space, think about the, the supporting kind of infrastructure for, you know, having kilns and welding material and frame shops and, you know, that kind of thing, right? So there, there are many things that we can do above and beyond, you know, this program, and this program won't completely solve the arts, as they say, but we think it's an important step. In terms of other communities, we'll be the first community in Michigan to have an Artist Laureate Program. So that's, I think, a feather in our cap in a lot of ways. There are other communities that have this program. For example, Tampa has a program. That's where we got the idea of building a permanent archive collection, for example. That's something that Tampa was doing that we thought was really great. Silicon Valley has a program. Their program is much more mature than ours, it's been going for many years.
Twenty-five years.
And they, they give out a lot more money than we will do.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah. But, you know, we'll be in, we'll be in good company.
Thank you.
Very good presentation. You said you're waiting to hear on the grant. When will you hear, and how much is the grant?
The grant application is due June 1st, and we'll find out in September.
Do you know how much they give?
Yeah, right. At this point, we're thinking about $7,000. It's, it's not a very expensive program to run.
Wonderful idea. Glad you guys are doing it, came up with the idea. In terms of support, initially, we could have Kristen Cole help draft an article of incorporation bylaws for your committee. We just did one recently for Canton Cares Fund, so we've already got a template created. Basically tweak it, and you should be set up and ready to go in terms of providing your committee future direction, documented direction on what the, what, what the constraints or the scope of the program is and should be for years to come. I think that's, that's wonderful. In terms of long-term costs, I think we would need to look at, if we build an archive of quality art, wow, but Greg's got to start thinking about storage and protection and...
Insurance, yeah.
That's a wonderful problem to have, so, hey, Greg says, help me with this line. Time to turn it over to Michael.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think this is a fantastic idea. It sounds like a fantastic program. I'm just thinking, sometimes art can be controversial, and this is a public program, even if it's not public funds, it's still a publicly administered program. What's your thoughts on how to kind of navigate, I guess, fidelity to the artist and their vision, and then also, but also, you know, what that means for art in a public space?
Michael, one of the phrases that we put in the actual Artist Laureate proposal itself kind of speaks to your valid concern, and that is, the artist would donate one mutually agreed-upon piece of artwork to Canton Township. We, you know, we tried to strike the balance. We didn't want to be too, have too many constraints placed upon the artist, because by very definition, they're rebels by nature, and we do not want to curtail their creativity. But on the other hand, we need to have steps in place, because this is a public program. As part of the application process, we expect them to submit a general plan outlining what they're going to do with the $10,000 they give us. We also want them to outline what their significant cultural, community experience is going to be as part of this grant award. Ideally, we want it to provide some sort of meaningful arts and cultural experience for our Canton residents. They need to demonstrate some sort of interaction with our community. So does that answer your question?
Perfectly.
Will there be any public funds in this program, or is it all through grants and donations from the community? Are you looking for the... Are you looking for the board to give you any money?
Fingers crossed. We're hoping for grants and public funds. If any of you wish to make a contribution toward the Canton Artist Laureate Fund, why, my tin cup is out.
In terms of public funds, at this point, the way we've structured it is, the only public funds would be the in-kind support that we get from the Leisure Services Office.
Leisure Services, because that's clearly handled it within the budget of Leisure Services without issue, so not a problem.
Oh, great. Thank you. Everything having to do with art connects you to your culture, to your world, and also it's great for economic development. It would be great to be a hub. I just wonder, you had mentioned something about a studio, you would provide a studio. Where would that studio be, and how would that be funded?
Well, we've been speaking with, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
We've been speaking with Jill Engel at the Village Arts, Partnership for the Arts, and we hope that the Village Arts Factory will be ready to accommodate us when the Artist Laureate is selected. But if they're not, we've identified a backup location at Sheldon School on Michigan Avenue. And this is, thanks to Greg and his leadership, we've been able to identify that as a potential backup location.
But they would be...
Michigan Ave and Sheldon Road.
Both places would be donating the studio, then?
Well, Sheldon School, sorry.
Yeah, we don't want to be presumptuous. I mean, our dream would be to house the artist at the Village Arts Factory as part of this whole vision of establishing the Canton Township Cherry Hill Village area as part of this arts and cultural hub. So, our dream would be to have it at the Village Factory. But, you know, we met with Jill and shared our preliminary ideas with her, she was on board. But we also wanted to have the plan approved, obviously, by the Partnership for the Arts Board of Directors. And we felt, protocol-wise, we should run the idea by the Township Board of Trustees first. So, we didn't want to be presumptuous in assuming that we would be at the Village Arts Factory because, obviously, we need to share the same presentation with the Village Arts, with the Partnership for the Arts Board of Trustees, so...
Great. Well, keep us informed of where that lands, then. Thank you.
One last comment is, I've learned, short time on the job here, is the, you're already working it to get broader support from the community, but if you can also co-apply with other groups, I mean, have it set up that you guys are the lead and manage. However, if you're co-applying with others, community foundation, have them, with the Partnership for the Arts, couple 501(c)(3)'s working together with the local government, I think speaks volumes. So, the more names that are behind it, and the more partnerships you can show, the higher probability of getting, having success with getting the grant.
That's exactly why we're so busy in April, because we're hoping to get not only, not only co-application like that, but we'd like to have members of different civic groups on our board, on our committee, so, yeah.
And we've, yes, and we've met with Beth Mead from the Canton Cultural, Canton, from CCF, because we want to make sure that she's on board, and we also wanted to have an understanding of how the Canton Community Fund works as a funding mechanism for this. And she is willing to partner with us and, obviously, establish the fund. And she even said she would be willing to work jointly with us on the Makaka Grant application.
And it ends our time here. Thank you very much. Really do appreciate sharing with us, and do keep us up to date as things progress.
And thank you all for your time and for your support.
Thank you.
Should we segue right in, or do we?
Call to order, yeah.
Okay. It's now 7:04 PM. I'd like to call to order our meeting. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to ask Clerk Segrist to call the roll.
Trustee Anthony. Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
The record is flat. Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am here today.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening.
Call for an adoption of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one set of minutes from March 26, 2019. Could I call for a motion to approve the minutes of March 26, 2019?
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now would be the time in our meeting, and we'll let the screen continue to go up, for public comments. If there's anybody here that would like to make public comments on an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time to do that. And I see Mr. Miller has requested, now would be the time, Mr. Miller.
George Miller, the county meeting, we had a county meeting here about a week ago. I'd like to address a couple of issues. I'd like to know, and it takes a little time, they're not progressing on patching potholes on Cherry Hill and Geddes Road, Canton Center Road. And maybe the township could address some of the issues I have in the past on drainage ditches along Palmer Road. I'd like to know why they can't be, they've overflowed from time to time, they can't be taken care of, since possibly this is part of the program. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, George. Is there any additional public comment? Any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none. We have payment of the bills. Thank you, Treasurer Slavens.
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second.
In favor of paying the bills again this month, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have this evening, a public hearing for local government approval of a liquor license of Desi Restaurant Group LLC. And let's see, we'll open up with a motion.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to open the public hearing at 7:07 PM to consider the request for a new Class C liquor license from Desi Restaurant Group LLC located at 42070 Ford Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion to open the public hearing, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. In summary, the Clerk's office has received an application for a new Class C liquor license from Desi Restaurant Group LLC located at 42070 Ford Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187. This would be a quota license. The township currently has three available quota licenses. One is tied to the PDD Amendment in Uptown or Cherry Hill Village. Desi Restaurant Group is opening Authentica, a full-service neighborhood Indian restaurant selling, serving multi-ethnic cuisine. Myself, Clerk Segrist, and Treasurer Slavens met with the Farzana Polly, owner of Authentica Restaurant, about their intention of opening a South Asian restaurant in Canton Township that provides alcohol service. Given the business plan, lack of existing businesses with this option in the area and decor, the recommendation is for approval and is being brought forward to the entire board. I think now would be a good time for public comment. Is he comfortable with that order of operations? Is there any public comment regarding? Please. So, we have with us this evening, representing, I'll let you introduce yourselves.
Evening Supervisor Williams. Patrick Howe, on behalf of Desi Restaurant Group, doing business as Authentica. To my right is Farzana Polly, the owner of Desi Restaurant Group, and to her right is Raj Reddy, the general manager of the restaurant. We're excited tonight. This is a great new restaurant concept that is opening in Canton within the month, and we're hoping to add alcohol service with one of your quota Class C liquor licenses. This is a small business. They've completely renovated a vacant space in Canton, and they've done extensive market research and are very confident this is going to be a great success in Canton, drawing residents and business owners and visitors to this unique restaurant. This is a restaurant with alcohol service, or hopefully with alcohol service. It's not a bar. They have 110 seats with 80 additional seats for banquet services. In that 110 seats, there's only 10 bar stools, so it's a very small operation. But it is important to them to offer, you know, a glass of beer, wine, mixed drink with the food to complete the experience, and offer different functions, you know, business functions, charity functions, celebrations, et cetera. That's what they're targeting here in Canton. So, I'll turn it over to my client, and I'll tell you more about the concept and answer any questions that you have.
This is Farzana Polly, and that's my friend, is Mr. Raj Reddy. I have experience in, since I started my life, I started, you know, working in a restaurant business. Back home, I'm from Bangladesh, back home, my dad was a chef. We had our own restaurant in back home. And I always tried to do something different, and here, when it came to USA, I always tried to, you know, get more experience, more, get more knowledge about the restaurant, how to run the business, how to do everything here. And since I started my job life, I am working in an Indian restaurant, and I already have like 10-plus years of, you know, working in an Indian restaurant, plus almost like five years I work as a chef. So, I know back and forth, you know, how to do the front, how to do the front work and back work. The Raj, he is a key person, and we know each other almost like eight years. We used to work together in a restaurant before, and we stopped working together, but, you know, since then, he's my friend, and we came up with an idea, like now, you know, we can start something in our own. And we chose Canton because I would say there is no restaurant, Indian restaurant, with a liquor license near, I mean, in the Canton City. So, if you want to go for an Indian restaurant plus a liquor, you have to go either Plymouth or you have to go to Farmington Hills, which is, I would say, it's kind of risky to drive at night after you are, you know, a little bit, you know, a little bit drunk and all. So, I would say it's better to be here, and I think it's a great opportunity to help the community. And it's a growing city, actually. That's the main reason we, when, why we picked the Canton City. It's a growing city, more population is coming up, more business are coming, so we think it's a better, better opportunity for us to, you know, improve ourselves.
There, I'd like to make another call for public comment. Is there any public comment? Yes, sir. A few people come in after they started talking, so...
Good evening, Council. My name is Mark Niemer. I'm the contractor who's helping these folks to build this concept right now, and then to put it together. I've been in the business for more than 20-some years already, and then I experienced, I have a lot of experience in building Indian, especially Indian restaurants. I came from Dubai about 10 years ago, and I built a lot of restaurants on that side of town. And a restaurant like this right here to strive and to survive in a community like this right here, without a liquor, I don't see it's going to, it's going to do very well. I've seen a lot of business, I built a lot of business, and a lot of restaurants on this side of town, without a liquor license, and they did not survive, unfortunately. So, if you want this right here to see this way succeed, you might want to grant this right here for them. Thank you.
We started the other direction, so maybe we'll start with...
Sure. Thank you. So, Clerk Segrist, this would be the last liquor license we have. How many do we have?
So, we will have two more after this. Yeah.
One on Cherry Hill.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. So, it sounds like a great idea. I just want to also say, we still don't want to encourage people drinking and driving, so that's important, not to say that we're closer, that they could, don't have to drive as far, we don't want to encourage that, so...
Certainly, yeah. No, everyone will be tips, trained, certified. I think that comment was a little spoken, misspoken in a way, but the point is, we want, we believe there's a market in Canton, and so we'd rather capture that business here than have the customer base travel. It's a 42070 Ford Road.
Finally, Sharks Club, the old Sharks Club's going to have an occupant again. Been empty for a long, too long, so, go ahead.
No, it sounds good to go eat at. Thank you.
Well, you know, I, you know, we learned recently that the number of liquor licenses is not a solid number, right? As things go into, if, you know, if a quota license goes into escrow and it doesn't get picked up, it will revert back to the township. This is how we ended up with more liquor licenses than we thought we had previously, so I'm less inclined to be a stingy with these as we had been in the past. We will also see a huge population uptick in the next census as well, which will grant us more quota licenses. So, that, that has, we factor that in, and additionally, I do like this concept. I think it's, you know, it's worth, I think it's a valid concept, so...
Just echo what Michael said, is, from the very first meeting we had with you guys, I knew that the formula you're putting together is, would be wildly successful. Everything is lined up for you guys to do very, very well at that location, and basically it's up to you from here on out, right? So, good luck to you.
I have to agree. Meeting with you, I think it's a great concept. Excuse me, and I did drive by there the other day, and I noticed there's a lot of parking too, which is important as well, so good luck, yes.
I'm in full agreement, so I don't have anything to add on that. I just had a question. You mentioned the Desi Restaurant Group, and so, can you talk a little more about the Desi Restaurant Group, and are there other restaurants that are owned by the Desi Restaurant Group? Or is this the first one, and you're starting this group?
The first time this restaurant group will be.
Okay, so, you're hoping that that's an umbrella that eventually you have other...
Exactly. We are carrying the bulk load of experience with us. We can serve the people with our experience, but we don't have any other restaurants. This is the first, first time we'll be opening it.
Okay. We can say we knew you when.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure if there were other examples we can look at that have already been open, but it's okay that this is the first one, too. I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Supervisor, may I ask, Raj, what is your last name, if I may?
Reddy.
Reddy. Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions. I just think it sounds like a great idea. I can't wait to, till it opens up to eat there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Staff perspective, Josh, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add, or your team's reviewed, and you're good. Okay. That being said, should we close our public hearing? Have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
So technically, you should ask three times if there's any more public comment, and then we move...
Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comments? Seeing none, call for a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of closing the public hearing, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So, I think we have consensus, it feels like we do. Could we ask Clerk Segrist to read the motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the request for a new Class C liquor license from Desi Restaurant Group LLC located at 42070 Ford Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187.
Support.
If the motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Best of wish to you. Best luck.
We'll see you all there.
All right. So, anybody that was related to that item, that's completed, and have a good night. You don't have to stay. I think we get pretty boring after that. Okay, I would ask the Clerk Segrist, read the consent calendar as a single item.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the Board adopt the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consideration of amendment to the FOIA policy as required by Public Act 564 of 2014. Consider appointment of Deljit Benepal and Christopher Carlisle to the Building Board of Appeals. Consider second reading, item C3, consider second reading and adoption of an amendment to Appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances for the Oakwood Healthcare Fillmore Place rezoning. And item C4, consider authorizing the township supervisor to sign the sanitary sewer service agreement between WTUA or WATU, Wayne County, and the city of Plymouth.
Support.
If the motion is presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G1, consider adoption of recommendations from municipal services and finance and budget on the 2019 water and sewer rates.
All right. Mr. Supervisor, I move, well, it's a simple one, I move to adopt the 2019 water and sewer rate study.
Support.
Summary, in December 2005 and again June 2007, the Board approved water and sewer cost of service recommendations, including rate methodology presented by Utility Financial Solutions. During January through March, staff updated the annual rate study documented to align the system revenues with the cost of the services. No changes in the methodology approved in 2007 were made this year. On March 27, 2019, staff held a community rate forum to educate residents on the proposed rates and answered questions in the informal workshop setting. Attached are staff's recommendations and the proposed rates to be effective May 1, 2019. These recommendations continued the concept of true cost of service that had been the basis of the studies done by Utility Financial Solutions. At this time, staff is requesting approval of the proposed water and sewer rates, as well as approval of the rate methodology presented in the true cost of service rate study update. The necessary ordinance amendments have... The necessary ordinance amendments have been prepared, and a separate board action item which follows here is, as well as a communication plan is already prepared to inform the residents of the changes. And the numbers still align with the information from our study session without change. So we've already gone through the information in great detail. I don't know if there's any additional board comments. Go ahead, Stephen.
Just how did the forum go? The community forum?
It went very well. Very few questions were asked. There was probably, there was less than 10 people there. And I think that includes staff people who showed up. So, there are very few questions.
I'm pleased that the rates were going down, I'm sure.
By itself, the attendance shows that people are pretty happy with the direction.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you for all your work. I know this is a lot of work to do this study, so, thank you.
I just want to commend the staff and the whole organization, including previous boards. A lot of municipalities are reactive when it comes to how they interact with rates and just economic factors in general. And this is a product, I know, two rates, two years with rate reductions in a row is a product of long-term financial planning and vision. And I think that it makes me proud to serve on this board to this day. So, thank you, and keep up the good work.
Echo what, like I said, do a great job. A lot of work has been done by this board and previous boards to ensure that the citizens of Canton enjoy a lower water rate as possible. And this year is, were able to fulfill that, that promise. So, good luck, and good luck, and good, thank you.
Yeah, echoing what they also said, thank you very much. It's funny when residents come up to you and say, things are going up, and you get to say, yeah, but the water. And they're pleasantly surprised, so, it's a good feeling. Thank you.
Public comment? Not anticipating any public comments, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G2, consider the first reading Code of Ordinances amendments to Part 1, Chapter 74 entitled Utilities, Article 2, Division 2, Subdivision 2, entitled Schedule of Rates and Charges, Section 74 through 83, and Section 74 through 84 entitled Water Billing, Water Meters.
Mister Supervisor, I move to introduce for first reading an ordinance which amends Chapter 74, Article 2, Section 74, 83, and Section 74, 84 of the Canton Code of Ordinances.
Support.
Very good. Basically, what this first does is start the ball rolling to lock in the rates. I have nothing further to add. Is there any additional comments, questions? Not expecting any, because it's pretty much just moving forward. Okay. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second re, yep, second motion.
Supervisor, I further move to table for consideration the proposed text amendment to the Code of Ordinances and to schedule a second reading for April 23, 2019.
Support.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3, I think there's only two motions tied to that, right? All right, item G3. Good luck tonight. Go Rocks. Item G3, consider authorization of bid award for the 2019 bus transportation.
Mister Supervisor, I move to award the 2019 bus transportation services to Trinity Transportation, 4624 Thirteenth Street in Wyandotte, Michigan, 48192, in the amount, knock to seed $19,684 from the FALM account, $6,475 from the enrichment account, $518 from the block account, and $12,691 from the TR account, which means transportation.
Summary, bids were solicited for the summer camp, camps, bus services. Two companies submitting bid, First Student and Trinity Transportation. The lowest bid was provided by Trinity Transportation at a cost of $259 per trip, which adds up to the total amount, which is presented in the breakdown in front of you. Greg also offered or shared with us here the cost of the transportation as compared to the total of all the different programs that we're running this summer. So this is a request to approve Trinity Transportation for the busing services. Are there any questions or anything you want to add, Greg? This is a once a year, we, this time of year?
Are we using one of these companies today?
We've, really, they, we've bid this every year for the past several years, and the bid has bounced back and forth between the two companies for several years.
It's not that the one we're using today dropped out or something like that?
No, it's really been these past two for probably eight-plus years, and just kind of bounces back and forth whoever has the lowest bid that year.
Yep.
Very competitive bids, as you can see.
Eight, okay.
Comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I believe that concludes our formal agenda. Any additional public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Josh? Greg? Fellow trustees, any?
To ask you, anything on Municipal Services Director and that process?
From staff this morning, we did talk about it in detail. Final, final posting has gone out, or call. Corinne had stated that getting good feedback, a good submissions. The next step is to screen at the HR level and then right back to where we started in terms of, once we whittle it down to top five candidates, I think we want to send those for an assessment, go through the assessment process, and then we'll set up our orders.
Have a target in mind, a timeframe, or? I know.
Right now, each of the functional area managers are doing a good job managing their wheelhouse. The directors have been supportive in terms of working with them to help them succeed. But I'm looking forward to that slot being filled sooner than later, personally.
About that, actually, since Tim did such a great job with, you know, looking at smart cities and technology, and he actually even took some of the presentations to SEMCOG, are we, is that one of the considerations also?
It'd be part of the job responsibility, part of the job function, absolutely.
Okay, good. So, I don't know.
Watching out for what's available to us. And represent Canton Township and the broader regional programs, which Canton has always been strong, public safety, leisure services, municipal services. We are recognized as an absolute benchmark community across the state in all areas. We truly are, and I'm not going to let that stop happening today.
Just wondering if we, if we see a lot of applicants with technology backgrounds? I didn't know if you were seeing that. Okay, good.
Well, the, because I have not seen the deck, I can tell you that based on conversations I've had with our HR manager, Corinne Connelly, my desires are to have a strong technical background combined with a strong management background. And one or the other alone is not strong enough. I need both and want both. So we'll see what the final candidates look like. But I'm being told that there's, there's strong candidates.
We need someone who is strong in the existing infrastructure that we have here today and making sure it stays running, but then also has some experience in the cities of the future and where they're going. So, that's important to me.
On an unrelated note, if, residents, if you look at this month's township focus, you will see that the Township Board is asking for interested applicants to submit their letter of interest along with their resume if they want to serve on our Ethics Committee. So that's exciting. The position, you'll have till the end of the month to get those applications in. But look at their focus that was mailed to you probably last week, I would say, for more information about serving on the Ethics Committee. The first year will be an interesting building year, where we'll pull together a lot of the procedures and policies for how the board will run. But it's really a commission that would only meet in the event that they had a specific reason to meet. So, if there was some type of ethics issue that was brought up. So, it's not an overly large time commitment, but yeah, it'd be, it's exciting.
If they want to read the policy, to read how we expanded it, it's right on the.
Yeah, all town, so there's an Ethics Ordinance, which is, I believe, in Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances, Administration Chapter. And we passed that ordinance in 2018, 2018. Oh, on that note, we'll want to bring something before the board on the 23rd about reinstating the Ethics Subcommittee for reviewing the applications and making a recommendation to the board. Supervisor, you had said you were, you were okay with that? So, are the two members of the Ethics Subcommittee interested in participating again?
Can you put the band back together again?
The band back together? All right.
Cover band.
Would it be appropriate to have a motion about that?
Not even necessary. Just go ahead and do it. I mean, if you'd like to, we can formalize it. Would you like to formalize it?
I would.
Let's make a motion.
I move to reinstate the Ethics Committee for the purpose of screening applicants for the Ethics Committee and to the Ethics Subcommittee of the Board for the Ethics Committee of the ordinance for the board appointment and to meet in a public meeting and make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You're going to give us the documentation and the words?
Yeah, that'll be in the minutes at the next meeting, and I'll shoot an email out to everybody what we just agreed to.
Very good. Okay, a little added business, no problem. Go ahead, Summer.
Just want to remind residents that the letters of interest for if they want to do local subdivision road repairs is due April 30 at 4:30 PM. And you can find more information about that on Canton's website.
Thursday of this week, which I'm going to try to come now again. And the board, full board's always welcome to come to the HOA meetings, but it's our last shot at those groups communicating the roads initiative and the deadline for April 30.
Is that meeting at, the HOA meeting?
Summit, I believe.
Six o'clock, the summit.
Because I'm going to talk a little bit about the bi-monthly that we're starting up, so, as well. And I'll mention the water rates. So, okay, all right.
Michael, something additional or no?
Nope.
Okay. Seeing no further business in front of us, call for a motion to close. Adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.